Good evening and welcome to the Manhattan City Commission Meeting. Welcome to the new year, 2023. This is January 3rd, and we appreciate you coming. It's nice to have an audience, and even if Mark said half of them are related to him, that's nice. We're glad you're here. So I'll call upon the city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Morse.
Present.
Commissioner Hassel.
Present.
Commissioner Reddy.
Present.
Commissioner Butler.
Present.
Commissioner Motta.
Here.
Mayor, we have five commissioners present. The quorum has been met.
Thank you very much. And the next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and never be unjustified.
And now, we would have a proclamation. Suzanne Glimore, if you'd come forward. And it says Kevin Bryant. Are you?
Oh.
Are you by yourself, or do you have a substitute? Okay. You're welcome. Please come forward.
Thank you.
Welcome. Yeah, thank you for having this. Oh, there's Kevin. We were recruiting a substitute, Kevin.
Oh, no, don't recruit. We have traffic, load.
Yeah, welcome. Okay, we have Suzanne Glimore, Glimore.
Glimore.
I say, okay. And Kevin Bryant are here to receive the proclamation for Martin Luther King Holiday and Activities. So at this point, I will please, oops, scoot on over this way when you get a chance. I'll read, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas January 16th marks the observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Federal Holiday and Service Day, established by public law in 1983. And whereas this King Holiday and Service Act highlights remembrance and celebration and encourages people everywhere to reflect on the principles of nonviolent social change, racial equality, community, and humanitarian service, and interracial cooperation. And Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union. And celebrating Dr. King's life and spirit through community-wide recognitions and service on King Holiday is an appropriate way to honor Dr. King, bringing our citizens together and strengthening our communities and nation. And it is appropriate for the City of Manhattan, Kansas, to support a community celebration in observance of the King Holiday and Day of Service honoring Dr. Martin Luther King. And each of us can and must contribute to making our communities better with increased opportunity for all our citizens. Now therefore, I lend to Morse, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, to hereby proclaim January 16th and 21st, and you'll have to explain two days, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Community Celebration and Day of Service in Manhattan, and urge all people to join and pay tribute to our life, to the life and works of Dr. Martin Luther King, and apply his life principles and teachings of service to inspire others to serve and remember his spirit of community. Suzanne Glimore and Kevin Bryant, I'll share this proclamation with you, and if you'd like to say a few words, please.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Morse. Kevin Bryant, Manhattan Martin Luther King Committee, and proudly we bring our art and writing contest, community celebration, Spirit Award, and our guest speaker, which will be the new Provost of K-State. We're happy to bring this to Manhattan to show the diversity and community that we have here. It's a fantastic community to be in. It's a, it's a, it's a community for a king. On the 16th, we'll be doing it. We'll be at the Douglas Center with our prayer breakfast community celebration. I invite you to come down. Saturday on the 21st is the Day of Service. Hands-on K-State participates in different various functions, and you can still sign up for Hands-on K-State, for you people listening out there. And then, of course, the laying of the wreath will occur at K-State on the 27th. Lorenzo Lockett will be speaking. You guys speak on that, so it'll be an interesting thing. And we look forward to celebrating in this fantastic community. I'm gonna stop dropping stuff any time now.
The art and writing contest theme this year is, as always, based on a quote from Dr. King. This year, that is, "True peace is not merely the absence of tension, it is the presence of justice." That contest is still open for submissions until January 7th, so the community is invited to participate. Children, youth, adults, anyone can participate, and you can drop off your entries at the Manhattan Public Library until January 7th at 6:00 PM, which is when they close. So we invite you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Good. I would just say that this community has a long history of recognizing Martin Luther King in this community, I don't know, 30 years anyway. And I would note that Jim Butler, Reverend Jim Butler, passed away this last year, and so this will be the first year that he has not been a part of the organizing committee. Pardon?
Spencer.
What did I say?
Butler.
Oh, sorry. Reverend Jim Spencer. I know that, I'm sorry. I just grabbed the wrong name, so. But I do want to mention Jim Spencer because he was kind of the glue that held things together, and we appreciated his efforts, lifetime, actually, his whole life. So, thank you all. All right. The next category on the agenda is public comments. If anyone has comments, then please come forward. If you'd like to pay tribute to your dad. Anyone? Seeing no one, I'll move on past public comments to commissioner comments. No?
You just wanted to give a shout out to Whoville, you know, for the Festival of Lights. They did a great job. Of course, those are coming down, which, which is sad, but they'll be back up next year. And remember, that's not sponsored by the city, so they take donations. So feel free this year to donate to Festival of Lights, so it will continue.
Yes, I just wanted to wish everybody a happy new year. Hopefully, it's off to a great start. Even though we didn't do so great in the Sugar Bowl, there's lots of basketball games to go to as well. And USD 383 starts tomorrow. Thank you.
I would just say that this community has done an excellent job with the holiday events that we've had, from, from the Blue Earth Plaza to the Lighted Holiday Parade and all of the events in the community. I think the Santa Clauses were just wonderful, and hope we get them back. I might also mention, I've been serving on the Law Board, Riley County Law Board, and we have just sworn in last Friday, the new Director of RCPD, and his name is Brian Pete, and that was his first day. And he's been very busy with the new job since he's arrived here. And we hope to have a welcome reception for him soon. I did take the opportunity to tour the Wolf House. The historic holiday decorations there were just wonderful. It's a real gem here in the community, so you might go there sometime when there's an open house about what life was like in the 1860s, 70s, or 80s, and it's pretty, pretty remarkable. And I also went to, these are just recent things, to the Flint Hills Discovery Center. It was like a pajama party for New Years, and they dropped balloons from the ceiling, and there were a lot of squealing kids. There were 220 people registered, although I think two-thirds of those are parents, that they have, you know, maximum the building can hold. But it was just delightful to see the children doing something in the community that was, it was a pizza party, too. So kudos to the Flint Hills Discovery Center for, and I know the zoo has been doing some special programming, too, so they've done an excellent job. Okay. With that, it is now time for, ta-da, the reorganization. So I would just like to make some comments here on my way departing the mayor position. And I think we've, we've had some real successes, and certainly, the word "infrastructure" would describe a lot of them. We have worked on the water treatment plant, the water plant, the sewer, the streets, everything. And that's gonna pay off. It's a, you know, it's like it's your house. Should I do this maintenance? It will pay off later. And I had my sewers line rubbed early, a year ago, and so, and I really think that we don't, we have not had the kind of, I mentioned on the radio this morning, the kind, number of, of water breaks that Topeka had. I heard on the radio, there were 125 during that severe winter, severe cold we had. And I confirmed with Ron that we had one.
At Christmas Day.
On Christmas Day, we had one. We may have had two or three, but for the most part, it was the, the, the work we have been doing in this community is really paying off. So I hope everyone, you know, you don't notice the absence of something. If we had 50 of them, people would be screaming bloody murder because their water'd be off and sewer and all that. So the fact that life is normal and usual is a really good thing. We have continued to chip away at the city's commitment to the North Campus Corridor. That commitment was made over nine, I've been on the commission now about eight years, and that was all, that commitment had already been made when I joined the commission. So we have continued to deliver on that. And, you know, it comes out of our hide sometimes because we don't have money to do other things that we'd like to, but it, a commitment is a commitment, and we have been good partners with Kansas State University, and we're going to help them get their aroma up, so we could enjoy these wonderful streets and sewers that we're building. It's, some of the highlights, we've, we're putting in a new data and technology system, an ERP, to replace the one we have, and we're using $3 million of ARPA money for that. But it's still gonna be a major investment over a couple of years of our staff time. Those are, that's the heart of all the computer systems for the city, and it's gonna be a big deal, and it's gonna require a lot of effort. We're, we've approved the Art and Light Museum. We are dredging Dishman Lake. I mean, look at the people that go there, that for, that will really be able to fish, because it won't be clogged anymore. We've approved the city's commitment to the Scorpion Project, and IRBs and all the economic development things that we need to do there. We've approved the midtown development for Aggieville. I won't talk about parking lots, but we have, we're improving sidewalks on Fort Riley Boulevard and on Hayes Drive, and there are others throughout this whole year and coming up next year that are major. And the, the new parking garage just opened a few months ago, and in Aggieville, and with, now we have license plate readers. We're just really modern. We accepted the FAA's contribution of about $25 million to reconstruct the runways. Is reconstruct the right word, Brandon? Okay. And that, that's gonna be major for us, and it'll serve us well for another 20 years. We've completed the first year of the Manhattan Development Code, and we're tweaking it, it seems. We've tweaked it twice or three times already, and I, we had a commitment to take a look at it again in one year, so that, that year's up, so it's time. We authorized a FEMA buyout of the National Church Residences on Garden Way, and those are so important to keep people out of harm's way every time we can, buy out a, and use FEMA for 80% of the, of the cost. We approved a pre, a pre-development agreement with the Manhattan Housing Authority. We adopted a new housing market analysis, and now we need to follow through to implement it. We've established a policy, this was major, it's taken some years, to develop a fee in lieu of stormwater fee, and we have just approved new chamber contracts, and we're redeveloping the levy system, reconstructing the levy system. Those are huge projects. And I just wanted to call attention to those highlights. They are all pretty much big-ticket items that have consumed our attention, our staff's attention. Our staff does an excellent job, resource-wise. Administration does a great job of finding grants, and the FAA, 25 million, I mean, think about the things that we've, we're accomplishing here, all to make our community better. As I address, go to, to address, welcome a conference here in the community, I, I usually say that Manhattan is one of the, is the shining star on the Kansas map, and I really think it is. We're doing things here that other communities are suffering and declining in population. We are steady and growing slightly, and that's a good way to grow, rather than having a huge bulge of, of some kind. If, I, I would have liked to have completed, or to have worked on the annexation of Green Valley along the Commercial Corridor. I think that's important to our future growth, and we can't just put our heads in the sands. That's what's happened in Green Valley, is head in the sand and not dealing with the, the issues there. I would also, I'm, I would encourage us to review and update old policies, because they tend to get in the, the old ones get in the way of the things that we need to be doing, and I know everybody wants to look the other way and, and avoid, but we've seen how some of them are so disruptive when we don't take action. So with that, I, I think our community is healthy. I think that we are in better shape than many communities are and many cities, and I, I want us to continue to grow and help, and we are so fortunate to have Fort Riley and K-State here and INBAF, so, and now, and future to have Scorpion. And so, those are exciting things for our community, and we, we can't take them for granted, and we have to keep blowing oxygen to all of these things, to make our community better and attract people. I'm amazed at the senior citizens that moved, they've gone to school here, or, but, and they come back after they retire, they come to Manhattan, and the young professionals who went away, got a job, and want to come back here. That's what we want to, that dynamic is what we need here in this community, and we're doing that. So it, it is all good. So just please, continue to, what, have patience with our street repairs and rebuilds. I'm pleased that we can tear up a block, but the businesses around it can, can continue to survive and make it through that short period of time, and then we'll go to the next block. But we don't tear up the whole street and put a lot of businesses out, out of business for that period of time. So I think our staff, our administration, has a good system and that we can appreciate. And so with that, I will move on to the, I, my comments are ending. And Brenda, the city clerk, has a plan for us.
I would like to ask the Commission for nominations for mayor.
I move that Commissioner Mark Hattasal, Mark J. Hattasal, be appointed to serve as mayor until the first working Tuesday of January 2024.
Is there a second?
No second.
Hearing no other nominations for mayor, I will now call the roll. Mayor Morse.
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel.
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner Motta.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
I would like to ask the Commission for nominations for Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, I move that Commissioner Usha Reddy be appointed to serve as Mayor Pro Tem until the first working Tuesday of January 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing no other nominations for Mayor Pro Tem, city clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Hassel.
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy.
Yes.
Mayor, Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner Motta.
Yes.
Commissioner Morse.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay. Down for a presentation? Yes, I will.
I think this is a record of mayors and even former mayors applying for being mayor. So on behalf of the city staff, the city commission, and citizens of Manhattan, I'd like to present you with your mayor gavel for serving as mayor from January 2022 till January 2023.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Yes, it's a pleasure. Thank you very much. Beautiful.
Also, we've kind of become a tradition of putting together kind of a picture lodge of some things that have happened, so we've managed to put some things together. Definitely, most recently, the chamber recognized you. We've had, I think, a record year of having the governor or governor's staff in Manhattan helping us to dedicate things or announce things, and so we've reflected some of that. I know they picked Manhattan for some of the ICH grants that we were awarded, and then Fort Riley, with the former Senator Maynor's retirement, and Check Discovery Center. We hope you all, now I hope you reflect some fond memories of your service, and on behalf of the staff and the commission, we thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Now, do I go down with the end of the table?
Yeah.
Change now?
Yeah.
Okay.
This one's too low.
You need to pull it up.
I'll have to. Oops.
There you go.
Oh, yeah. All righty. Well, first of all, I would like to thank my wife Pamela and my daughters Jessica and Georgia for being here tonight, also my brother David and his wife Julie for spending part of their evening with us. I really appreciate the support and encouragement that you guys have all provided me over the last three years on the commission. I've always felt that being mayor of Manhattan was a real honor and privilege. People across the state of Kansas love coming to Manhattan and enjoying the great things that are happening here. As I visit with people across the state, I'm thrilled with the opportunity to share with them all of the things that we are doing here to make Manhattan an even better place to live, work, and visit. I don't have any particular agenda for the next year, other than my usual soapboxes of less regulation and interference by the government in our lives and livelihoods, our continuing attempts to provide services that citizens expect in an affordable way, and hopefully, the continuous streamlining and shortening of city commission meetings. Having said that, the top items I would like to see us work on and hopefully accomplish this year include getting our head around and developing some action steps on this workforce housing issue. I know we won't have any money to implement anything for a while, but with the steering committee in place, I would like to see some tangible progress this year, including some bright ideas for the commission to consider. Secondly, we need to start discussing a plan to allocate our extra 2.6 million in ARPA funds. Our budget discussions this year should include some firm possible uses, and I'd like to have it settled by the end of the year. I would also like to see us make some progress on the office space on the first floor of the Aggieville parking garage. Since it doesn't appear we're gonna get state grants to finish that space, we need to come up with some ideas on how to fund, use, and manage that prime piece of real estate. I am concerned that the community is still suspicious of our plans for the Parks and Recreation Department. We need to communicate more and better as to what the city is doing to provide expected Parks and Recreation services and programs. We need to get a director hired and going as soon as possible. Getting the pools open last year was much appreciated by the public, but I'm afraid we still have a ways to go to re-earn the public's trust in this area. As we have seen over the past few years, the updating and improving of our community is expensive and inconvenient. Between the closures and detours of Kimball Avenue and the ongoing construction in and around Aggieville, these improvements can really try our collective patience. If you're hoping to an end, for an end to these hassles, I'm afraid this is not your year. We are looking at more and better inconvenience in Aggieville, total closure for a few months of the airport, continued linear trail closures on the levee, and don't forget the regularly scheduled orange cone zones that come with our annual road maintenance projects. But still, these are exciting times here in MHK. In the next 18 to 24 months, we will add a world-class museum, a state-of-the-art vaccine and drug manufacturing facility, probably two beautiful and top-shelf Class A office buildings, an updated and improved airport experience, much-improved levee protection and stormwater management infrastructure, a great new maintenance for this building for city equipment and employees to work from, and soon, the long-awaited commissioning and opening of the National Bio and Agribank Defense Facility. It truly is a great time to be alive in Manhattan, Kansas. Thank you again for this honor. We will, is there any reason to pause for any reason? We're just gonna keep moving and knock this stuff out quick, if you guys can hang on a minute. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature, or those items which have been previously considered by the city commission and may be approved in one motion. A commissioner may request an item be removed for separate discussion and considered immediately following the consent agenda. Comments from the public related to these items is allowed. Each person will be limited to one speaking opportunity for up to five minutes. Commissioners, do you have any questions about any items on the consent agenda?
Yes, item E1 on the request for proposal for the Arts and the Park Concerts. The, in the memo, it gives how much we spent for those events that we put on for 2019, 2022. It said, over the same time period, received 24,000 in sponsorships and donations. Was that 24,000 for like those number of years cumulative?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. Also, in the proposal, the last page says optional possible sharing of vendors and sponsors monies. I would hope that, you know, if we do this, we get a good proposal where it incentivizes them to go out and get those, but either we get a percentage of that, or the money goes into better events that we put on. Because we did, Mark mentioned Parks and Rec, when we did those meetings, we heard from people in the community, the willingness to, to sponsor, and I just don't want to sponsor to give a vendor more money, I want to make sure we've got something like that.
I think we've got a unique opportunity to, to look at some talent within the community who might be able to program, plan, and lock in those musicians and those groups that may come and perform in our, our park during the summer. We do get a percentage from them every year when they operate within our facilities. We don't know just exactly who is gonna be interested in this, but we do foresee that relationship, and we want that ability, as you mentioned, to create incentive for them to go out, generate those sponsorships, and then ultimately potentially share in those sponsorships. We're fairly optimistic about where this is headed, and then we've had other conversations about other services going there too. And I know Commissioner Butler has mentioned it before as well, in terms of looking other ways to generate revenue through billboards and signage. There are other opportunities that we're exploring and we'll be bringing back to you all as well.
Okay, good, glad to hear. Any other commissioners' comments or questions? All right, is anybody in the public care to weigh in on any of the items on the consent agenda tonight? All right, seeing none, I would close public comment. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and a second, city clerk?
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
All righty, we will move on to our one item on, which is a public hearing, considering vacating a portion of a public utility easement located on Lot 3 Interlock and Addition 2905 Palmer Circle. Ben?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. I will make this as quick as possible, understand the new margin orders. Maybe I can use some technology. Okay, like you said, Mayor, before you, you have a request to vacate a utility easement. The background on this particular utility easement is that when the, this utility easement was included in the final plat for the Interlaken Addition. I know this is a lot to look at, you'll get a better exhibit moving forward. But basically, the way this easement is running, it bisects the, one-third almost of the east, correction, west boundary of the lot. The current owners are requesting the vacation of this easement so that they can put a pool in their yard. Here's a better exhibit. So, as you can see, this line right here is the easement, and it falls like such. They are requesting to basically vacate this area here with it. There's nothing here, there is a line that runs along, sanitary sewer line that runs along the property lines, but this is well outside of any area that we're concerned about. No utilities are current in the right way, as I said. All utilities have responded to the request and all support this vacation.
Very good. Any questions for Ben? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody here for the applicant to speak apparently, so we'll throw open the public hearing. Members of the public, nobody signed up for it. But if anybody would like to comment or have a concern about this utility vacation, please come forward. If not, I will close the public hearing. Any other questions for city staff commissioners? If not, we'll be ready for a motion.
Okay, I move that we find that no private rights will be injured or endangered by such vacation that the public will suffer no loss of inconvenience thereby, and approve first reading of an ordinance vacating a portion of a utility easement located at Lot 3 Interlock and Addition, also known as 2905 Palmer Circle, Manhattan, Riley County, Kansas, 2205.
Second.
All right, there's Commissioner Butler made a motion, and Commissioner Ready seconded. City clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right, that is the extent of our agenda for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
There's been a motion to adjourn, please call the roll.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
At six? Okay, 6:35, this meeting is adjourned.